Tom?
I'm good.
Okay, we're live. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, March 14th. It's six thirty in the evening. We are doing this on go-to-meeting. Council members are participating electronically. I, John McArdle, I'm sitting here in the council chambers along with city recorder Johnson and city manager Pesamir, along with Jason, who's doing technical. And then Anne Scheck is in the audience. We're going to make this work, so looking forward to just moving forward. So anyway, let's go immediately to Karen. Would you please do the roll that everybody knows who's actually here?
Karen.
Counselor Moore.
Here.
Counselor Marcus.
Here.
Counselor Morton.
Here.
Counselor Renssbaum Smith.
Yeah.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Hicks.
It's not noise, isn't it?
And excused. Okay, council members, we have minutes from March 10th and March 14th in your packet. Do they meet with your approval?
I have one correction on the two approval. On the March 10th minutes.
Please.
The person who won the Good Neighbor Award, his stage name is Nathan Junior. Junior is not his last name.
Yeah, and we verified that with him, and he prefers to be by Junior.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. And with that in mind, I move to approve both of the sets of minutes for the March 10th and the March 14th meeting as received.
And I think that's Counselor Martin Willis that seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. I hear no opposition. The motion carries. We're going to go to visitor comment, and I believe there, Ms. Scheck, did you want to make visitor comment this evening? Please come to the, right there at the dais, there's a, and Jason will help get you situated. And just go ahead and, just like regular, you're on the video. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, mayor and councilors. I come to representing Trumart News and Publishing, which has gotten some feedback from the past week, and these are such irregular times that ordinarily I wouldn't take to a microphone to tell you what some of these concerns are, but I thought I'd take them opportunities tonight. First, I wanted to say that with all the discussion we've had about the debt and the water bill with regards to Minnet, I think many people are finding a very reliable and friendly operation and appreciating it at this time of need, and I would put myself first on the list. The second is that there's been a request that the utility bill mailing includes some reassurances about city services in terms of water supply and trash pickup. And with particular regards to just the city's finances now, we just got, there's no risk to that continuation. The other one is about the library and parents who would like to check out books or have access to books. Are they going to be able to do the live contact with the library directly with the specific request? I did provide the library website, but I think this is the physical act of actually this particular book that I was asked about. Finally, in Riverview Park and in the library parking lot, there's Wi-Fi, and does the stay-at-home order include being banned from taking Internet down to, a computer down to these two locations? And if so, is there a request that people remain in their car or seat in a particular area? And finally, could the city Facebook page, which I have not looked at recently, have updates where now Touch a Truck and some other upcoming events are posted? And finally, I'd just like to thank you for organizing this so that I'm assuming citizens can tune in at some point to see or to listen to this meeting. And maybe that might be one thing that you could make available on your Facebook site, how they would do that, because I myself am a technological failure in many ways. So thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. I'm going to guess that Mr. Pesamir has addressed some of those issues. Can he ask report with that new address?
I will make just a comment today. So I will cover most of that in my report, but I did want to cover the Wi-Fi in the park because I had not found out covering that. The governor's order does, it still keeps our parks open, it's closed, some portions of the park, the play structures and stuff, but people can still go to the parks, especially if they're in their car, there's Wi-Fi there. There's also Wi-Fi in the library parking lot that people can drive to and can have free Wi-Fi. That's been available for a long time, continues to be available.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing those things forward. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is comments, and I want to share a few thoughts as we move forward. You know, we are facing big challenges, challenges that are different than anything that most of us have ever dealt before. And I want to acknowledge and let people know that I realize that there are people that are scared, there are people that are worried, the people who have lots of legitimate questions, and I get it. I have my own worries, my own concerns. You know, I'm not just a mayor, I have a day job at a community college, I'm also a father, I have friends that are older, we have relatives and they're, and so I get it, I understand it. But I'm confident that with the people that we have in our community and surrounding us, we have a good staff, we have a wonderful police department, we have a great group of public works folks, we have great folks in the office and other parts of the city that are doing everything they can to provide the safest and quality service to our community. We also have wonderful partners in our community. I am honored to be able to work with a good friend, Mayor C. Scoons over in Monmouth, and city manager Chad over there, working with Ben Strange at the fire district, working with Jennifer Kubesta at the central school district, with Rex Fuller from Western Oregon University, and Representative Paul Evans. This group of people, we've been meeting to find the best ways to present, to do good things for our community, to provide information and working together, and it really is an honor to work with a quality group focused on trying to keep people safe and move our communities forward. As we deal with this, I have two requests for people. We want to keep people safe, and we need to keep people apart from each other. We need to have social distancing. So I have two things I'd like you to do. I'd like each and every person to take a personal responsibility. You don't have to try to fix things in Portland, in Washington DC, in California, but you only, we ask you to impact the people that you know and that you touch. We ask each of you to help set a new community standard that we will have social distancing because it is important for our seniors. It is important for people who have compromised immune systems, cancer victims, our people in our community, some of our youngest residents who have little or no immune system. And we need to do what's necessary to keep them safe. And because one person can pass it on to another person, to another person without them knowing it. So here's what I'd like you each to do. I'd like you to each take a personal responsibility to make sure that this is the new standard, that there will be social distance in the store, there will be social distance anytime there are people around. You'll see me out walking my dog, but the rest of the time, I'm at home. I'd like you to make sure that parents, that you talk to your kids and make sure that they understand. I ask young people to talk to their friends and make this the new expectation of being a good neighbor in our community is to keep a social distance, because that's the way we're going to keep people safe. That's the way we're going to keep people out of the hospital. That's the way we're going to make sure that grandmas and grandpas and other people are around here. So I ask that each of you take personal responsibility to do that. The second thing I'd like you to do is reach out to your neighbors, reach out to your family, reach out to your friends, whether that be here in our community or somewhere else. People, people don't necessarily like having to be inside. I get it, I'm as social a person as anybody else. But I ask that you take the time and pick up the phone, call grandma, call grandpa, call some folks that you know that are in the area that aren't able to get out. Call your mom. Parents, call your kids. Call your friends, talk to them. Make sure that they don't feel alone, because that is so important in a time like this. This is a time where we're going to define our community, our state, our nation, in fact, the whole world. This is a new, a new time, and how we deal with this makes a huge difference. I feel confident that we will overcome this, that things will get better, and they will. It may take weeks, it may take months, but we can overcome this because we're the kind of a community that good things can happen. So please, set a new responsibility level, contact the people, and do all your part. Do your part to make our community a safe place and a healthy place, because we're going to come back on the other side of this, because we live in Independence and good things are going to happen here. Thank you for letting me say a few things. I'm now going to turn it over to our city manager and ask that he make a city manager report.
Thank you, mayor and councilors. Just a quick comment, we are not broadcasting this meeting live. We don't want to overwhelm our systems. We are not a city that has very expensive broadcasting routers and such. As you know, when we record a meeting, we have a camera in the back, we record live stream, but we are recording this and we will put it into a format where we can post it on our normal places. It's just going to take us a little bit longer. We are looking for future meetings to have the ability to livestream this, but we also wanted to make sure that we were able to get this done in a way that makes sense. So just a quick few comments on myself, you know, we know that many small businesses in this community are barely holding on. We know that many residents are living paycheck to paycheck, and for some, that there's not an immediate paycheck, their immediate future. We know that we're going to have to change our policies and practices to help our residents through these unprecedented times. And I want people to know that this council and the city care about our residents, care about where they're at and where they're going, and that we're going to do what we can to work through these challenging times together. Together, we will make it through this. Together, Independence will remain an amazing place to live, work, and play. My notes, on Saturday, March 14th, the city had a priority setting meeting that was only 10 days ago, even though it seems like half an eternity. At that meeting, we went through the 2040 Vision Plan statements, value statements, and the game-changing ideas that came out of the process. It was a great exercise. It was an exercise that I think puts the finishing touches on the 2040 Vision Plan. That plan will get finished and it will be put out, and it has great ideas for moving forward in the future for this community. I'm glad we're able to spend that time. What we weren't able to spend time doing was doing the priority setting, which was the second half of that meeting. And I genuinely appreciate council's indulgence on letting me spend time with my management staff. That time was invaluable. We really needed to spend that time to set our course for the COVID-19 response. We made good work of that time. We came up with very detailed tasks that needed to be completed, and most of those tasks we did. So I thank you very much for that time. It was, it was well worth it, and we've done a lot since. Since that time, we've been working seven days a week. My management team has to get on top of the COVID-19 outbreak and city operations. I'm glad to say that we're in a good place right now with all employees working, although we have modified pretty much every operational procedure and practice that we're doing in the meantime. We are still taking our lead from the Center of Disease Control, the Oregon Health Authority, and the governor, and we are staying in our lane. I mentioned it before, it's important that we stay in our lane. Everybody has been doing a good job with that, and we're continuing to stay in our lane and support our residents and the community that we serve. The current status of our facilities, City Hall Administration is closed to the public as of tomorrow. Some services will be available online or by telephone. All services will be available by telephone or online. We are putting a drop box inside the street-side doors in the front of City Hall. Should anybody have something to need to drop off, general inquiries to the city may call 503-838-1212, which is our general phone number, and we will have people answering that phone and making sure that they get to the right person. The police department will see visitors by appointment only. The appointments will be limited to victim interviews, fingerprinting of essential employees, and public records requests. Any non-emergency report will be taken over the phone. Of course, as always, call 911 if you have an emergency. Municipal court arraignments have been canceled. The library is closed until further notice. Please do not bring library materials during the closure. Donations will not be accepted, and all library programs are canceled until further notice. We did try to find ways to allow materials to go out from the library, but with every other library closed, and there was really no way to safely protect our employees from getting materials from other places or from distributing them, we are not going to be able to put out any, give out any further materials until a future time. The museum is closed until further notice. The motorbiker campground is closed. Playground equipment is closed per the governor's order on Monday. Sports closed, or closed, sports courts are closed for the same reason, and we have put up signs to use social distancing in all park activities. The parks are not closed, but people need to use social distancing techniques when they enter. All events at City Hall are closed until further notice. Our building department is continuing to complete inspections, and we are finishing up processes to allow for remote inspections so that people continue to move their construction projects forward, and people are doing projects in their home where we are not going to go into, can actually connect with us through Skype or some other device, so we can do the inspections virtually. Our current status of our employees, we are very concerned about our employees' safety and may have taken many precautions. We have been social distancing for some time, and today issued a social distancing policy that meets the governor's requirements. All employees are teleworking or shiftworking. Any further restrictions will lead to teleworking and minimal essential employees only. So currently, we're all working, but that's going to change if the governor issues a further order restricting things further. If we do, will we really, police and public works will be the only staff, shift workers on, will be teleworking for every other employee that potentially can? Communication, someone said to me recently, in an emergency, all weaknesses are exposed. And to be quite frank, we can do better under communications. So yesterday, I appointed Lyle Gilbert as our Public Information Officer. Lyle is sergeant in our police department. He has the training for a PIO, and centralizing our communication strategy has already paid off significantly today. We have been really focused on our internal communications, making sure we understand what's going on with our facilities and what's going on with our operations. We are going to be working with our partners that the mayor mentioned earlier to make sure that we're getting public service announcements out, and we're listening to what the community needs, making sure that we can get them information as quickly as we possibly can. We spent a lot of time on our website, making sure that we were able to have multiple pages so that there can be a lot of information that we can put there, so that website will continue to get filled out significantly as we get more information to put on there. And we are keeping current, so if people want to know what's going on with city, go to our website. That will always have the most current information. We will push stuff out through social media, but we'll always point back to our website because that's current. I'm happy to report that today, our Spanish website went live and is currently fully working, so all the same information that's on our English website is now on our Spanish website. Again, that took us a little bit longer because we were trying to make sure that we could get great information out, and we are glad to have that up so we can get resources out to our Latinx community and residents. So we will continue to work collaboratively with many informational releases, and we will continue to do more to get information out that will help residents find connections and get information that they need. For small businesses, takeout is available. We have a lot of small businesses that need your support right now more than ever. Some of them are struggling, so if you have the opportunity and the means and can support one of them, please do. Hotel is open, and currently more people are using it, have a remote office to operate through. For the time being, the hotel is open, and if you need a remote office, it's a great option. Haven't stood up our emergency operations center, we're looking into it. That is something that takes a little bit of time and effort, obviously would be part of the joint emergency operations for the state, but there are also resources that can be provided through that system that we may need down the road. So we have that in the back of our mind, we're continuing to monitor whether we might do that, but to date, we haven't, but we certainly can at any point in time, we're ready. So aside of my report with 2040 meeting information, that was, I think, a good, healthy diversion for all of us. We had a lot on our minds that particular Saturday, a little over a week ago. And my advice, council staff and the community, is that even in the worst times, always spend some time working on a project in the future that looks past the current worries of today. Plan on something constructive that will improve your life and the lives of others. We did that on March 14th, I found it very helpful personally. The city of Independence continues to look to a bright future for Independence and for all of Oregon, and together, we will make it through this. Any questions for me or my staff?
I have one question about billing. Do I understand that water and utility shut-offs are on a moratorium right now?
Yes, so we are not going to be doing any water shut-offs during this period of time. We have already committed to do that till the beginning of May, we will extend that if necessary. We also will be not charging any late fees or any fines for being late on payments. And there may be more as we figure things out and as things go down, but we want to make sure that people do know that their water will not be shut off during this period of time, and if it goes off for some reason, let us know.
Others, any other questions? Okay, I don't hear anybody saying that they want to ask questions, so I'm going to keep us moving forward. In that spirit of moving forward, you know, we're dealing with the issues currently, but we have some things in front of us to talk about our future. So Mr. Pesamir, I think you get to take the next thing, the bid award for Sunset Park.
Yeah, if Kai Cotton is available, Kai can cover this.
I am available.
Thank you, and good evening and welcome virtually to our meeting.
Good evening, mayor, good evening, council. So I'm happy to bring forward the bid award for Sunset Park. Staff is requesting the authority to award the contract for services for Sunset Park, low bidder KNE excavation, in the amount of $92,580. Can you hear me okay? There is some backbeat there.
You're doing just fine.
Yep. So moving on, Sunset Park is identified as an unnamed park in the 2015 Parks and Open Space Master Plan and is located in the south of Independence near Chestnut Street. It was dedicated as part of the Sunset subdivision. While it does not have an official name, staff uses Sunset Park, at least for now, as identification purposes. The project went out to bid February 17th of this year, and notice of intent was sent out March 6th also this year, and there was no protest. The city is committed to making the improvements to Sunset Park by 2021 with a grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreational Department, for $68,500. The park is also contracted Galbreth and Associates for design, which is completed in late 2019. This phase of the park project will be for mass grading and drainage. The phase for this work for Sunset Park is identified in the capital improvement plan and the budget for this current fiscal year. OrPD grant will pay $68,000 of the current bid. The total amount, budget for this fiscal year was $103,500. Parks STCs, the amount of $35,000 makes up the difference and includes monies for contingencies. Basically, we're just continuing on a project that's been moving forward, I'll be a little slowly, but it's been moving forward, and staff is anticipating that we'll finish to grass path grading and drainage in 2021. What we're asking for tonight is to award the contract for KNE excavation for monies for mass grading and drainage. And then hopefully, I'll be back after the new fiscal year and talking to you about the path.
Okay, are there questions for staff on this?
Sounds like it's right in budget.
Yeah.
Okay, we talked about this in the past, but okay, this is an action item. If someone would like to suggest action, I appreciate it.
I'll go. I move to award the contract for services for Sunset Park to KNE excavation for $92,580 and allowance of $9,258 for contingency, and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary contract documents. Second.
I have a motion, and the second is their discussion. I hear no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? I hear none, I declare the motion passed. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to bond refinancing. Ms. Butch, I think it's.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I really don't have a whole lot more to add to the memo that I did for you, just that the market did improve yesterday. I haven't looked today to see how it ended out, but it's really volatile right now, and we would like to be able to act on this when it becomes a good financial opportunity for us. I haven't heard in the last couple days from our financial advisor, he will, he will give me a call as soon as it's a, it's a good deal. Like I said before, it was upwards of about $350,000 savings, and mostly for Minnet. These are the ones that are eligible to be refunded right now. Just a side note, though, there is some legislation on the federal level going on right now in order to help stimulate our municipalities through this, this economic downturn because of the. of the coronavirus is that to be able to lift that, the moratorium on advanced refundings. And if that happens, we have a couple more opportunities that could happen potentially and we would want to be able to move quickly on those as well.
Okay, so it'd be fair to say that we're looking to refinance to save money because, and we're giving the city manager and yourself the opportunity to, to move when the market's at the right place. That, there, I'm doing this for our audience that may not see the document in front of us, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff?
Yes, the motion that you outlined here does not include any future refinancing. You mentioned it tonight about the possible governmental changes that will lift the moratorium on bond refunding. Will you be coming back with another motion?
Thank you for, for that. If, if it is your desire, then instead of limiting it to the refunding of the Minnetonka 2010A, 201017B and SPWF Hoffman Road, you could make it more of a blanket for any eligible refunded options, refunding options.
And this would be then also with the, the suggestion and the approval of the financial advisor that you mentioned earlier?
Yes, please, yes.
Yeah, if I could just add, so that would be helpful. I, I think, just to make sure that you all know, we, we can't finalize any of these refinancings without council action. So we're, we're trying to do is based on the advice that we have, is to go out, find the best possible rate that we possibly can during this and allow the city to save money in all of our loan areas that we can. So we want that flexibility to basically go out and do everything that we can to try to save, to save the city money. If interest rates were what they were when this analysis was done a number of weeks ago, then we can save significant money and we want to be able to take advantage of every opportunity that we can.
Yes, and I'll add that with that, we will bring a formal resolution to you for anything that we want or have opportunity to do a refunding for. So there will be a more formal resolution.
So this in essence is letting you get jumpstarted and get moving?
Correct.
So may I suggest wording might be, we just take out the refunding of, and take out all the detail and go proceed with refunding of applicable bonds. Does that sound okay? I'm looking at staff and just taking out the detail and just making it so all bonds that are eligible to be refunded, that would be a fair game? Does that look okay?
That would work.
Okay. So the.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, our staff would, by using that language specifying bonds, would that include a Hoffman Road loan? Is that specifically a bond?
Yeah.
There we go, thank you.
Loans, okay? And applicable bonds, that sounds good. Are there additional questions for staff? If someone would like to make a motion related to this, this is great, please do it. Okay?
I move to authorize the city manager or designate to proceed with refunding of applicable and appropriate bonds and loans when the market stabilizes and refunding provides sufficient savings.
So I've got a motion and a second. Staff, does that do what you need? I'm seeing Mr. Pesamir saying yes. Okay. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Is there any opposition? I hear no opposition. Who was the second during that one, please?
I seconded it.
I think Tom did too.
Yeah, we both did.
Counselor Takeus.
Yeah, flip a coin.
There you go. Well, always do, always follow up, make your city recorder happy. Okay, Mr. Pesamir, I think we have an issue that you'd like us to address.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This resolution, or this council action memo was really straightforward. When the Independence Landing Project was being planned, they needed some easements in place for water line and they put it in the best place that they, they thought they could at the time. Subsequently, they laid out all their buildings and realized that one of their townhomes was actually over the water line where it was at. So we, this council action memo would essentially allow us to declare the public easement as abandoned and allow us to release the water easement. Just kind of as a note, the city and the city manager is able to take in public easements and record them and for the interests of the public and the city, however, public easements are best released by council action, so that's why this is before you tonight. Just so you know, we did put in a new easement where the water line was relocated to and everything is, is pretty much ready to go.
So this is about keeping the paperwork clean?
That's right.
Okay, are there questions for the manager at this point? I don't hear anybody asking any questions. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. If someone would like to suggest action, that would be good.
I move to declare the public utility easement dated November 21st, 2018 and recorded December 6th, 2018, instrument number 2018-014074, as abandoned and no longer in use by the city and authorize the city manager to execute the documents necessary to release the season in an executed and recorded release easement.
Second.
It keeps, it keeps me, it keeps muting me. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there any opposition? I hear no opposition, motion passes. Okay, we're now, we're now moving forward to authorizing a grant application. Mr. Irvine.
Hi there, Mayor, Council. Would you be willing to like this?
I can hear you.
So, okay, good. I, I've got two things in front of you today. I'll just take them one at a time. Still a little hard to be talking about this, but you know, they've got to, got to keep moving forward and planning for the future. Couple of years ago, you'll recall, we did a master plan for reworking the parking area in kind of riverfront portion of River View Park. If you think of it, it's mostly from sort of the, the chain link or the chain fence towards the river. This is our beginning of our work to move forward with that, that project. I think the staff report is fairly self-explanatory, so I'm not going to get too far into it, but really, you know, we've been pretty successful with grants in the past and you'll see with this first one, Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. This is actually a grant that originally paid for River View Park back in the, in the 60s, I believe it was. So it's a great, kind of a high dollar grant that we can go after. We also have an opportunity with kind of the way the timing works out on both these grants to sort of split budgetary cycles and essentially save up money for the matching portion of the, of the, of the project. As always, you know, we try to match, you know, other people's money with other people's money. So, you know, we are committing or proposing to commit city system development charges towards this project. You'll see we'd be able to use the same SDC money to, to match both of these grants. So we're trying to double up there. And if we are successful with one or both of these grants, we can potentially use that money to go after other grant programs as well. So for this particular action item, I, I need a resolution of support for the application from the city council to go after the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Questions for Mr. Irvine?
I appreciate how, how able Mr. Irvine is in finding grants and in, in receiving them as well.
Yes. Okay. If there are no additional questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move.
Go ahead, Counselor Ransom Smith.
I move to approve Resolution 20-1524 authorizing grant.
Motion? I need to say. I heard Counselor Morton, I think louder than whoever was there. So I have a motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposition? I hear no opposition, all in favor, oh, the motion is passed. Mr. Irvine, to you again.
Great, thank you. So this, again, this is instead of the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, this is now for the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department's local government grant program. It's a same basic idea, same project. And, you know, the other advantage we have is we, we have successfully tapped this grant a couple of different times in, in more recent years, most recently for the Independence Landing Park project. So I'm hoping that they might carry a little extra love for us since it'd be, you know, helping build onto a project they already helped fund. The other real difference here is it's, they only require a 40% match for this grant instead of the 50% that's required for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. So I'm asking for more money on this one from them.
Questions for Mr. Irvine? I don't hear anybody asking questions. We love grant, grant applications. All right, this is an action item, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 20-1525, authorizing application for a local government grant from the Oregon Land and Water Conservation Fund.
Motion, second by Mr. Takeus. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is there any opposition? Motion carries, thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Evander, I think it's to you.
Hi there. How are you folks doing?
We're having a wonderful time.
Great. Nice to be talking with you. I can't see, nice to see you too. This is a very simple item. You remember back February 35th, you had a public hearing on changes to the residential development code. At that public hearing, we said that we would prepare an ordinance to, to allow you folks to adopt that ordinance, to adopt those changes. That's what this is doing here. Are there any questions about that?
Questions for the, we dealt with this at a couple of meetings ago and we asked them to bring forward the necessary legislation. And are there additional questions at this time? I don't hear anybody saying they have questions, so it is an action item, please.
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill 2020-02 in full as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Takeus. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? No opposition, motion carries.
And ordinance adding a new subchapter 17, allowed uses in residential zones, adding a new subchapter 18, density area and dimension requirements in residential zones, adding a new subchapter 19, residential design standards, amending subchapter 20, low density residential zone, amending subchapter 21, medium density residential zone, amending subchapter 22, high density residential zone, amending subchapter 23, medium density residential zone, amending subchapter 74, accessory structures of the Independence Development Code and declaring an effective date.
I'm so glad you had a chance to read that. Okay. If we can move to the second motion, please.
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill number 2020-02 for the second time by title only.
Motion?
Second.
Second by Ransom Smith. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposition, motion carries.
And ordinance adding a new subchapter 17, allowed uses in residential zones, adding a new subchapter 18, density area and dimension requirements in residential zones, adding a new subchapter 19, residential design standards, amending subchapter 20, low density residential zone, amending subchapter 21, medium density residential zone, amending subchapter 22, high density residential zone, amending subchapter 23, mixed density residential zone, and amending subchapter 74, accessory structures of the Independence Development Code and declaring an effective date.
Okay, let's go to the third motion, please.
I move to up the proposed ordinance council bill number 2020-02.
The motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Takeus. Is there discussion? Glad that we're able to get this done and move this forward. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed? I hear no opposition, motion carries.
The bill has passed and will be assigned ordinance number 1576.
Thank you very much, Council.
As we go into.
Thank you very much.
That's okay. I just wanted to thank Fred for his diligent, persistent work on this project.
Thank you. I want to take a moment before, as you folks will have council announcements, I just wanted to take a moment and thank staff for being able to put this together. I know a number of cities around the state have had to cancel meetings and delaying the work of the public because they didn't have space or technology or things like that. And I really appreciate the hard work that is exhibited by all members of the Independence City staff to help us keep moving forward in the way we need to and allowing us to have meetings that allow us to set the stage for continued success. So I really want to thank people for, for doing this. I know it was not an easy lift, there was lots of moving parts. Council announcements, anybody have council announcements, please?
Got nothing.
Nothing? Counselor Morton, you almost always have something.
I just was putting the finishing touches today on the online magazine and there were a lot of empty spaces in the calendar. So let's save those announcements for when business resumes.
Okay. Is there anybody else that has anything else? If anybody would like to end our meeting, I would entertain such a motion.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thanks to everybody, have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.